This being come to order, day is Tuesday, September 26, 2017. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Mayor Protam, do you have any interactions?
No.
Okay. That was a short answer for a long pause. Our invocation today will be by Ryan Ship with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and the Pledge of Allegiance will be done by Councilwoman Wilcox.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are so grateful for this beautiful day that Thou hast blessed us with. We are grateful for this city that we live in and the many blessings that Thou hast given unto us. We're grateful for our local leaders who dedicate their time and their energies to help our city to grow and to progress. We pray that Thy Spirit will be with us today as we meet, that we can discuss those matters at hand and know of Thy will for the people in this city and how to bless their lives. We are so grateful again for all the many wonderful blessings that we've been given, and we say these things in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Obergehr.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lizell.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All are present.
City Mayor, do you have any announcements?
No, sir.
Okay, before we move on with proclamations and presentations on the agenda, just want to thank everybody for taking time out of your day to come in today. I'm sure we got a couple of issues here that are going to be near and dear to some people's heart, so if you do get up and talk, when I give the opportunity for public comment, try and keep your comments short to the point so that we can get as many people as possible. Thank you. Move on with proclamations.
Proclaiming October 8th through the 14th as Fire Prevention Week.
Come on up, Chief. This whole place should be filled with firemen.
Hopefully they're out doing exactly as described there.
This proclamation is Fire Prevention Week, October 8th through 14th, 2017. Whereas the city of Prescott is committed to ensure the safety, security of all those living in and visiting Prescott, and fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, with homes being in the location where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas having planned escape routes and alternative lowers the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas Prescott residents have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Prescott's first responders are dedicated to reduce the occurrence of home fires and injury through prevention and protection education, and whereas 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to remind us that we need a primary and secondary way at all times to get to safety. Therefore, I, Harry B. Obergehr, Mayor of the city of Prescott, do hereby proclaim October 8th through 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout the city, we encourage all who reside to have two plans, two ways out of their homes, their places of work, and to participate in many public safety activities and efforts of the Prescott Fire and Safety Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2017. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause this hill of the city of Prescott to be affixed this 26th day, September 2017. Chief?
Thank you very much. Mayor Obergehr, members of council, from the community's perspective, fire prevention really begins with individuals and their ability to take care of themselves, so we highly encourage all our community members to kind of follow along with the theme and find two ways out. Thank you very much.
You move on to presentations.
Item A, Greater Prescott Regional Economic Partnership.
Mayor, city council, city staff, and citizens of Prescott, I'm Gary Kellogg. I am the interim director for GPREP, which is the Greater Prescott Regional Economic Partnership. I'd also like to introduce my associate, Ginger Johnson. Ginger has been a longtime resident of this area, has quite a background in both education and in the job force training. So, we were hired in July to kind of get to see if we could get GPREP back on its feet. So, we have spent the last couple of months really doing the homework, making sure the accounting is right, the insurance is right, updating our website, and doing all that groundwork. And we've also taken that opportunity to meet with folks like Jim Robb of the city of Prescott, and working with Wendy and the other economic development folks in the area. We see our role, and the board charges that way, as being a support organization, helping attract folks to the area when they find out where they would like to be, whether that be Prescott Valley, Prescott, Chino, Dewey-Humboldt, then we would just simply hand over, but always there to support and help. We were an active member in the recent cyber symposium. We sponsored and also attended it. And for anyone who didn't, if that wasn't an eye-opener, I don't know what was as far as what's going on in the cyber world. It certainly was an eye-opener for me. So, I just wanted to do a brief update to tell you where we are. We're currently finishing off our marketing plan, that is, to how do we attract from outside of the area, and also how do we ask our local manufacturers what they might be in need or who they might know that would be worth bringing to support them. So, we just want to say thank you for your ongoing support. I know Michael is on the board, and we very much appreciate his input, and it's been very valuable. So, with that, I would certainly be open to any questions about us or kind of where we're going. Currently, we are just part-time. We work three days a week in order to get this thing up and running again.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the council?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, the city's been a member of GPREP for ever since it was founded, and that's what, three years?
I believe in three to four years.
Three or four years, okay. And so, what do you vision as the reason why the city should participate in the future?
I would have to say if you were looking at it from a regional standpoint, that you have that regional partner that can go out and bring them to the area, but also we can support, for example, your Jim Robb. When he needed some help, we were there to step to the plate. And the same thing with Wendy Bridges. If she is needed some help, she had a couple of clients that she asked us to take a look at. We did. In one particular case, the city has now taken that one back, but that's what we're really there to do. But more than anything else is to make sure that we're working with all the ED folks on how do we attract to the area. There's a lot of components, as you know, to that, the educational background here certainly. You guys are blessed with some great universities, and that you have a Pi Community College. When I saw your CTE Center, that any community would drool over that, so. And by way of background on myself, I'm sorry, I spent 12 years in the ED for Lake Havasu City. Prior to that, I worked for a company called, many of you know, Citizens Utilities, and wherever I happened to be, I was their ED guy on the ground to make sure that we were coordinating with them. So, that's by way of some background on myself, so.
And do you see a full-time executive director coming on soon?
That's what we've planned. In fact, is I was, I met with our chair this morning and talked about that very thing on the timing piece, on what that would be. So, I think it's at some point, probably within the next few months, they're going to have to start to get serious and decide what they're going to do there. And whether that member comes from within this team, I'm not sure yet. I can't answer that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Orr.
Yes, Gary, I just want to say thank you for sponsoring or helping us sponsor that cybersecurity conference, and hopefully we'll have more opportunities like that down the road, because I know Jim wants to plan on bringing more groups in at CTEC. If GPREP can help with that, it would be great.
Absolutely. That cyber thing, my only thought was, I'm just sorry more people didn't attend, because, boy, it was a lesson. I mean, not just the fact that we attracted some of those folks here, but just what you learned from it, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Move on to item B.
Friends of the Jersey Lily Courthouse Lighting Fundraiser.
Mayor, council, thanks for letting us be here today. See some faces that may not be here in the near future, and I don't know if I have a chance to say what a good job you have all done, and been really good participants in the city and the activities and all its value and where we're headed here and so on. So, I'll be seeing you, but maybe not back there anymore, but there are two of you now, and they're going to be gone, I guess. I thought I had Mayor Obergehr broke in, but I guess I won't have him to talk to anymore. Greg, I wouldn't even try to get him broke in. He was, you know, he's down the road. He knows I'm joking, of course. All right. Reason we're here today, I want to make this as short as I can, but as you know, when Jersey Deli Saloon sold, it was kind of a fast sale and best kept secret on Whiskey Row. And along with those, that in mind, I had gone to Sherri Heiney of the new chamber director and told her that I didn't think I was going to have the time with my wife's heart operation last year, and I just, I don't know what we're talking about there, I couldn't handle it, you know, it just took a lot out of me. And of course, she went, oh, no, you know, we can't, we need the money, you know, it was a typical situation. So, we decided to talk about it, and to make a long story short, Susan Roberts is the new owner, and her son and his friend, and they closed in May, and I decided I could stay on, I don't want to call it as an advisor, but there's a lot of new people involved, meeting the council and the new owners, and as you know, this is about a three-month project with a one month to talk about it prior to that. So, they decided they're going to take it on, and we're going to try to do it again and continue it, hopefully, because it is a good cause, and, you know, if you like Santa Clauses and kids and babies and all that, you know, you can't help but be for the lighting, and I think it's one of the best attractions in all of Prescott annually, and of course, the rodeo is big on a different level. But to make a long story short, we're going to need some help this year, and if any, one reason we're here, we had the auction for the kickoff party, which everybody's aware of, and then donations, of course, is the other half of the equation, we're trying to raise this money for the lighting. So, we need your backing as usual, so you can't go away and say we didn't ask. And I think Gary's going to say a few words, but thanks again for your help in the past and your continued involvement in the lighting effort, so, thank you.
Hello. This is our 10th year doing this, believe it or not. It sneaks up on you, so you've all heard it before. A local artist, Bradford Williams, has donated a bronze for our auction item, and State Senator Karen Phan will be there on, excuse me, December the 2nd to draw the winning maffle ticket. So, if, I thought Greg was going to put up our flyer, but I guess he didn't. But anyhow, Michelle made sure that he got it, and anyhow, if anybody can help, we appreciate it. Any donations for the live auction, we'd appreciate, and thank you very much for 10 good years.
I want to thank both Tommy and Gary for everything they've done in the previous Christmas lightings, and I know this year's going to be another great one, and it looks like you got your first donation, so.
We got, well, yes, sir. And Mr. Blair's donated every single year, and, you know, he's been a great friend.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Got a couple comments here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Lizell.
Gary and Tommy, thank you. You know, we haven't got rid of you yet, but thank you for both of what you've been doing and continue doing, so.
10 straight years.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looking forward to another successful Christmas lighting.
And thank you, Mr. Blair.
I believe that's going to be on till December, right, when you actually turn the lights on?
Yes.
Till December, okay. Move on to C.
Update on the Yavapai County Fair held September 7th through the 10th.
Hi, I'm Rosalie Darby, the general manager for the county fair, and we wanted to come back and report how our fair went this year. So, briefly is, our attendance was down by 9%, but we had some really rainy days, and for that much rain, we were very happy with our attendance. Our attendance overall was very well-attended across the board, it's just those rainy times really did impact it. So, overall, though, we are still in the high percentage of what we've had over the past few years. When you can see when it was back at Tims or Prescott Event Center, they were anywhere from the 10,000 to 12,000, and we have been averaging between 17, almost 17,000 to 22,000. Some of our events that we held, each day was packed with events. On Thursday, of course, we had our 4H and FFA showmanship in the livestock ring, we had our opening ceremonies. This year, we added a junior NFR bull riding competition, which was a lot of fun to watch, and they will be coming back next year as well. Friday, we had a working ranch horse competition and our ranch rodeo. Our ranch rodeo is one of the top two in the state for attendance. It's one of them that they all covet to be at. This year, on our main stage, we had Harry Lou's Jr., which was a lot of fun. On Saturday, of course, we had our family fun night, and Mogian on the stage. And Sunday, we added two new things, which was, one was an alpaca show, and we also added our talent show, which was a lot of fun. How do I get to the other? There we go. So, some of our great events, and it's just probably easier to just tell it in pictures, so I can't tell it without just going through there. One of the things that we had this year that we enhanced greatly was the school tours. We had approximately 1,500 students and teachers that came through on Thursday and Friday. These were educational tours, as they were able to partake in the different events throughout the fair, as well as when they were in the homemaking department, they each one were able to decorate cupcakes or make a craft, and in gardening department, they got to garden with something. So, lots of hands-on. Those tours went on on Thursday and Friday. Of course, there's the dinosaur, which was a huge hit.
Which one's the dinosaur?
Yeah, there it is. There we go. Which one's the dinosaur? Exactly right. The dinosaur was talked about, and people wanted to come and see it. He is so lifelike, it was amazing to have him there. We also had our RC race cars. One of the big things that we wanted, and yes, Greg Lizell did win the race, and he got the trophy, yes. So, one of the things that we really accomplish and work hard at is that a family can come to our fair and enjoy the fair without any additional funds. They don't have to go to the carnival, and their kids can still participate and go home and have a good time. I'm not guaranteeing no tears about not going to the carnival, but they can have a good time. We built our own farm experience where the kids were able to go through, sorry, I guess I went a little too fast. There should be more, but maybe it didn't click them all. Anyways, our kids were able to go to farm experience and pick apples and participate. They were also given a coloring book about their experience at fair. They were also able to see baby pigs, chicks, so the hands-on experience there was fun. Our homemaking department did a phenomenal job, having cooking demonstrations, sewing demonstrations, plus throughout the entire fair was hands-on, quick, like one-minute crafts for anybody that walked through. We're greatly appreciative to the city of Prescott, their use of Barn A and really not even holding us back. We went in and polished the concrete floor in Barn A and washed the walls, and it looked amazing. We look forward to doing it to the other two rooms, so Streets will have a really pretty room to come back in and put their stuff on top, so that's okay. And then, of course, our animals. Our livestock auction was a very success. There was about 89 lots that sold through the auction, plus we were also up about 25% in our open livestock. And like I said, we added alpaca this year. Entries as a whole were up about 200, even though it spread it across the departments. One of our fun departments that we added this year was a street art competition. We had 12 teams that competed from the city of Prescott High School. These students came, and they were given a two-foot by three-foot piece of whiteboard, and they had to paint something that had to do with the fair, and they just sat there and painted on it. So, that was really great. We will now use those pieces to decorate. If you see on the back of Barn B, we went in partnership with the rodeo, and we added 10 50 amp RV circuits on the backside of Barn B, so that we don't have to run a generator on that backside. We're hoping to work with city of Prescott and add another 50 amp service on the light pole that we can lock, so we can get rid of generators altogether. So, those are some improvements that we've worked on to help bring it there, and looking forward to even more improvements next year.
Maybe you can identify that place where you want the electrical drop, and we'll give it to the city manager, let him work on that, so.
Okay.
We'll go out and take care of that.
Thank you.
Councilman Lizell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I had a great time. My kids had a great time going there this year, and despite the rain, those are impressive numbers. And I know the first year you guys came back home, you couldn't really call it a county fair, but now the true spirit of everything that's offered in our county with livestock, crafts, and everything, it's just a great, it was wonderful. You did a great job.
Thank you.
And I talked to Prescott Frontier Days, and they said they thought it was a very successful event, and appreciated you putting on a very fine performance, so.
Thank you.
They gave you great kudos.
Thank you, yes. Our relationship there is going very well.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have a date for next year already?
Yes. It will be September 6th through the 9th.
I want to make sure my garden's healthy, then.
Make sure your garden's healthy, yes. It will always be for the next five years, the weekend after Labor Day. It falls perfectly right after Coconino and right before Mojave, and that's a key to be able to get the attractions to come there.
Councilwoman Orr.
Yes, so Rosalie, how can we help you? You are kind of like a one-woman show, you and your husband. How can, it seems like you need more hands-on.
We do need more hands-on. I theoretically volunteer my time throughout the entire year. I work pretty much full-time on fair. I have a board that has doubled every year, and we look forward to it doubling, and it does make it easier each year. The contribution, we did have about 10 volunteers from the city of Prescott this year, but those four-hour stints of time to help us sell tickets and those little things, those are critical, and the more we can get of that kind of support is phenomenal, because when we don't have to do that, we're paying $10 an hour, and then we're subject to not really knowing what their skill level is, because we're only hiring for a four-day stint.
Well, if you need volunteers.
We always need volunteers, yes. Yes, always looking for volunteers. We're pursuing many more avenues to grow the fair even more. I believe in it, so I guess that's where I'm stuck. I'm not going anywhere. My five-year-old's pretty much in Groston showing too, so I guess, thank goodness, I have a little one, or otherwise I'd be like, hey, mine are gone. So, yes.
Okay, any other questions come from the council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to consent agenda.
Item A, approval of payment to Apple Incorporated for 30 iPad minis. Item B, approval of city contract with Fitness Appraisal LLC for comprehensive wellness, fitness testing of firefighters. Item C, approval agreement for potable water with Capelludo Enterprises Incorporated for US Vest redevelopment project. Item D, approval to purchase a new engine from Bingham Equipment Company. Item E, revision of plat of Centerpoint East Commercial Center, subdividing eight existing parcels into 34 parcels to permit tenant units within the eight buildings to be individually
Is there any item that a councilperson would like to pull for additional discussion? Okay, do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 9A through 9E.
Second.
I've got a motion and second vote, please. We'll move on to liquor license agenda. Item A.
Mayor and council, this item is a public hearing and a request for an acquisition of control, where they are adding a person to their LLC for Far From Folsom, located at 214 South Monizuma Street. This application is being determined to be in compliance with the city requirements and being recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid, and the application has been posted at the location for the required 20 days. No public comments have been received, and the applicant is, should be present to answer any questions you may have.
Is applicant present? Okay, is there any public comment on this particular item? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second vote, please.
Passes 7-0.
I move to approve for liquor license application number 12133660 for an acquisition of control for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Far From Folsom, location 214 South Monizuma Street.
Second.
Motion and second vote, please.
Passes 7-0. For item 10B1 and 10B2, special events. Mayor and council, before you are two requests for special event liquor license applications. Number one is for the Boys and Girls Club of Central Arizona. The event is taking place at Grand Highland Hotel Holiday Inn Courtyard at 154 South Monizuma, and the second one is for Shadows Foundation, and this is the Big Sting event, which is taking place at Watson Lake, located at 3101 Watson Lake Road. The applications have been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval.
Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to forward special event liquor license application 10B1 and 10B2 to the Arizona State Liquor Board with recommendation of approval.
Second. Motion and a second vote, please.
Passes 7-0.
Regular agenda.
Item A, restoration of library Sunday hours.
Mayor and council, I'll lead off a little bit and then turn it over to Roger for some more comments. First off, I think it's important to say, why seriously consider this now? And one reason is a number of you have individually approached me about reinstituting Sunday library hours, which leads me to believe you're hearing from your constituents, this is a want they have. Second, with Prop 443's passing, it's had a tremendous stabilizing effect on our general fund now, and it's going to have that effect going forward. Also, sales tax revenues, which I haven't got a chance to share with you, and I'll share with you now, for July and August exceeded our budget expectations by about $93,000, which is a positive and puts us in a good financial situation. Also, kudos to Roger and his staff. Over the past five years, they've averaged about a $60,000 coming in under budget. So, for all those reasons, I think appropriating $42,643 to make sure this happens for our community is financially doable. Additionally, I think it's really important to frame this in the context of what is the reality, which is you're really restoring the level of library service that this community has enjoyed and expected historically. You're just going back to what was your normal before. This isn't some expansion in ours, this is really returning to what the expectation and the demand was prior to what we've had to deal with in the past few years. Could some, and I'm sure will some, argue that there are other priorities more important than them? Sure. But we also have to acknowledge that the whole concept of local government is predicated on the concept of providing public services that are demanded by the citizenry and what their expectations are. And this is really important to a lot of people that live here and work here, and I think that's clearly been demonstrated through the postcard campaign, the number of friends of the library, and the number of just general supporters. of Friends of the Library, and the number of just general supporters. So with all those things being the case, the financial wherewithal that we have to do this, it's very hard for me to argue now isn't the time to return to the normal of what this community has wanted in terms of its library services. With that, I could turn it over to Roger to talk a little bit more about it.
Yes, Mayor and council, the item for consideration is the restoration of library Sunday hours. In order to provide services during the hours on Sunday, four part-time temporary employees would need to be hired to supplement our full-time staff. As detailed in your packet, the estimated total cost of employees for the remainder of fiscal year 2018 is $34,443.20. The estimated cost of utilities for the additional Sunday hours is approximately $8,200 for an estimated total cost of $42,648.20 for restoring Sunday hours for the remainder of fiscal year 2018. Funds for the item are available in the general fund, and movement of budget appropriations will be done in June with the other appropriation adjustments if needed. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I'll go ahead and start off with some comments. Restoring the library hours may be a good idea, but I'm not sure this is the right time to do it. The council has a responsibility to establish the priorities for funding, needs determined by the city staff, and we have to look at needs versus wants. And I kind of see this as more of a want rather than a need. We pass a budget back in May and June, timeframe to fund city departments and activities. And at that time, everybody is operating on that. So if there is our additional needs for the city, I have not seen that list from the city manager that we can look at and prioritize and make sure that we're going after the things that are most important. I feel a list of needs should be evaluated and prioritized for funding before funding an activity that is already well-funded. And apparently, in the past, they've been able to do, you know, maybe cost-saving measures or something like that, and if they can turn back $50,000 every year, seems that that covers the amount that you're asking for here. 42K would pay for another cop on patrol. We know that the police force was significantly reduced to help pay for the police market pay plan back in 2016. Our police are working a lot of overtime, which can cause stress both on the job and on the home front with the family. A cop on patrol serves the entire community every day. It seems to me that our priority of funding should be critical services first, followed by the support for revenue-generating activities second, and revenue-consuming activities should be last. I'm concerned about adequate police and fire service. I feel that the city manager needs to evaluate these activities and determine if they are currently adequately staffed. I'm not sure that they are, and I think, you know, I believe our police chief back during the budget process was looking at a need of five additional officers. And we put that on hold because at that time, we didn't even know if we were going to get the 443 passed. We have indicated support for a hotel on the plaza, an innovation center, and approved terminal at the airport. These all going to require some funding. All these can be revenue generating in some form through bed tax or sales tax or improving conditions for economic development. I feel that with improved revenue-generating activities, we can further shore up the general fund and then provide for additional funding for the library and other revenue-consuming activities. At this point, I'll go on to the council for their comments, and the first one is Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, since you're my employee and Roger's not, I talk to you.
Sure.
If I'm not mistaken, we have two and a quarter million dollar budget for the library.
It's pretty close to accurate, yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, we have about 21 and a half people.
Yes.
Who are currently assigned to the library, which, number-wise, that's about 75,000 ahead. While I realize it's one and a half million collectively, it's 75,000 ahead by average. You know, I don't understand why, in the fiscal condition the community's in, you can't just, I mean, you're the city manager. Just open the library seven days a week, period. We don't, and on top of that, we can do to the taxpayers or for the taxpayers what we told them we were going to do. We were going to send the money that was generated with Prop 443, in total, down to pay up the PSPRS bill. I support sending the $46,000 down there. I support opening the library. You have the ability to do it.
I think there is a very good chance, based on the track record of the library coming in under budget, that they could bring the $42,648 in without going over the appropriation. I think there's a very good chance that that could happen because that's what they've done the past five years.
And I appreciate your comment. I also appreciate your revelation that we just picked up in sales tax a bunch of money.
$94,000.
What we told this community upfront, guys, ride with us, help us generate the revenue that's necessary, bring it in, and you know what? We're going to pay this up as quick as we can and move on. Now, I think it's incumbent on you as the manager to do just that.
I agree with you, Mayor Protem, but it's also incumbent on me to provide the services that the community has and I got expectation for.
All right, is there any reason why we're not opening the library? No. All right? Open the library.
Alakazam.
That's simple.
Open sesame.
Councilman Blair.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've talked all along and probably been chastised more than anybody that if 443 didn't pass, it would mean some more draconian cuts to the library, public safety and others. You know, this whole thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, we had two budget looks at the past budget session, and that was two looks to say that, here's what happens if 443 passes, and here's what happens if 443 does not. Predicated on the worst-case scenario was to paint the picture that we'd have to leave the library closed on Sunday. We're no longer in that scenario. 443's passed, our revenue dollars are there. I've talked to you specifically about your opinion as my employee, as a city manager, and your opinion was that we have the funds to do so, so I am in support of opening the
Councilwoman Shiska.
Thanks, Mayor. As I was coming into Rotary today, a young Rotarian asked me, well, where do you stand on opening the library? And I said, well, I'm 1,000% behind it. And he said, oh, thank you. And my 18-month-old son says, thank you also. You know, I'm somewhat confused about priorities in Prescott. Two weeks ago, we were approached with a $43,000 proposal to put speed limit signs in alleys. And of course, we didn't buy into that, but I didn't hear any of this, we've got to prioritize our, you know, expenses, and we've got to put the money here, and we've got to put the money here, and we've got to put the money here, before we put the money into something which is part of the quality of life of Prescott. So I'm definitely confused about that situation. It seems like we spend money when we care about what they're spending money on, and don't when we don't care. I know there's folks out there that could care less whether we have a library, but we are not a basic city. This is a quality of life issue, and I am 1,000% behind opening the library.
Are you done?
Yes, sir, I'm done.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have to disagree with you. I see the library as a need in our community because it serves such a broad spectrum of people, from infants to the very elderly, from very wealthy to the homeless. Everyone in our community uses the library. It's a place of knowledge, it's a place of learning, it's a place to get a, learn how to get a job using the job training and computer resources, and it's a place to socialize, has a little coffee shop. You can buy a used book, you can borrow a book. It's just something that's essential to our community. As Steve Shiska said, it's important to our quality of life. And I think we have to remember that 443 was supported heavily by Friends of the Library and library users. And I don't remember very how many postcards.
About 10,000.
A lot, more than 6,000, I believe, yeah. I still have all mine. I was going to stack them up here, and I forgot.
I can put them in the library and display.
Okay, I'll keep them. But I was impressed with the number of comments that people made. The little kids' comments, I love the library, you know, I come here and I love to read, and from the grandmas who bring their kids there. It just has such broad community support. I think it's important that we restore the hours. We're not doing anything new. It's restoration of something we took away a couple of years ago.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly support opening the library. You know, the beauty of today is we're not talking about cutting the library again. We're talking about restoring because Friends of the Library and the citizens of Prescott said yes on 443. Last council meeting, we sent down $11 million to pay down PSPRS. This year, we have budgeted right at $26 million that we're going to pay off this unfunded liability. And, you know, I am very pleased that we're actually talking about this. I know Michael could have done this as an administrative management, just gone ahead and done it, but I'm glad that we're recognizing and thanking our community and saying, you know, we are committed to paying down the unfunded liability because the sooner we do it, the sooner we can retire that tax. But at the same time, we're committed to restoring our community to a full-service community, and Prescott Public Library is essential for our citizens. So I'm, I think we should be celebrating this moment, actually, so, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, I don't think I missed anything here. I could have. But did I hear you say our sales tax collections were up a few bucks?
They're up $93,000 for July and August.
So not.
Over expectations.
The point I'm trying to make is not only, you know, a lot of this conversation was predicated on 443. I, as one council member, promised my constituents that we would take all revenues in excess of what was needed to run this city to pay up our liability as quick as possible. Okay? Now, if I heard you correctly, we were just up a bunch of money. I also know it takes 40-some thousand to restore opening the library. Open the library and send a bunch of money down to pay up PSPRS and keep moving it up. I mean, if you want to keep faith with the voters, you want to keep faith with the residents that voted to give us the dollars, not only to pay up the PSPRS bill, but to have a community-involved city, or whatever you want to call this warm and fuzzy stuff, let's do both. We're in a position to do both, and let's move on.
If there is a desire to send sales tax revenue over expectations, that's a policy decision you guys could certainly make, but I would make that at the end of the fiscal year to see what the total is and not go with a two-month snapshot.
And I don't disagree with that comment, but I think you have to set the stage to give the voters the confidence that we're doing everything we told them we would do to do both.
I understand what you're saying, Mayor.
Any more quacious comments from the council? Any from the public?
My name is Daniel Mattson. I live over on Merritt Street. I am famously an advocate for the homeless. I've got to tell you, that library being open on Sunday would be such a blessing to the homeless population, and not only that, but those who are on the verge of becoming homeless, who want to use it for sending out resumes. This could be a very, very good thing for a lot of the people in this community. And I myself, I use the library for internet access many, many times. I would love to have that library open on Sundays. And again, we did pass 443, and one of the things that I think was an expectation was that if 443 passes, the general fund would be freed up a little bit to back off of some of the austerity measures that were necessary. So I think opening the library on Sunday is a no-brainer. Next thing I'd like to see is for us to move toward opening the library nine to nine, seven days a week.
Don't push.
Whoa, I said, next thing, next thing. And I don't know what hours you're going to do the library right now. I think, what, one to five? Why not nine to five? But anyway, so I really, really think that opening the library back up on Sunday is the right thing to do. Thank you.
We got one comment from the Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I thought I saw our library advisory committee chairman come in the building a few minutes ago, and that's Jerry Jones. And, you know, one of the things during this whole conversation we've had now for the last several months, we haven't heard any comments from Jerry Jones. So at some point in this, I would like to hear from our library advisory board chairman. Have they discussed this? Do they have any comments with regards to where we're going?
Okay, go ahead, sir, and then we'll have him come up.
All right, well, thank you very much, Jim. My name is Tom Benson, and I've been a resident of Prescott for over 24 years. We moved to Prescott because it is a home for families of all ages, place to work, place to raise and educate a family, and maybe even retire here. And we did not want to move to a sun city north. And as you know, support for education has always been our passion, and we continue to work toward convincing the public of its importance for our community and our state. And I might add, you know, we're doing a lot to attract businesses here to this area. And are they going to say, you mean, you don't have a library that's open on Sunday? The library is an important part of that effort and has been doing many things to educate children regardless of their economic status, as Daniel very well pointed out. Under the direction of Tony Koss and many others, we now have a first-class library that we can all be proud of. It would be a shame not to use it seven days of the week. Now, people who work cannot easily get to the library during the weekend, during the week, but they can get there on Sunday. Now, there'll be a lot of talk about saving money, but your job really is to invest money wisely. And there's a lot of evidence to show that investing in our youth is one of the best investments that you can make, so I urge you strongly to open that library on Sunday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jerry, you want to come on up?
Mayor, council, my name is Jerry Jones, and I am the current chairman of the library advisory board, and have been on it since its inception four years ago. What I have to say before you today is some fact and some opinion. The opinion, I'll save for later, but the facts are, the board, advisory board of which you all hired us to do, has not discussed this and have not reviewed it and have not voted on it. I know you all get paid, so you're worth something. We're all volunteers, so, well, we're not worthless, we're priceless. So we'd like to have a little input on this and look at it in more detail because we all want to keep the library open on Sunday. There's no question about it. And we know that it was closed for the obvious reasons, and things have changed since then with the passing of 443. Now, we want to take another look at this and see what we can do to not spend the money but keep it open. It's not a question about keeping it open. Everybody wants to keep the library open. Hell, yes, it's free, so why wouldn't you? So that's where we are. We don't want to, and this is where my opinion comes in, we have an opportunity here to show that we are good stewards of the monies and that we don't need the 42 to keep it open. That's the options we want to look at as an advisory board. That's the options we want to look at as an advisory board. That's my opinion. And I think we need that time to do it. We're not scheduled to have a meeting until November 8th. I'm going to call for one in the first week of October so that we can get to work on this. I've had a lot of comments on how we can do some other things to keep the library open without being, having to fork over $42,000. So we'd like that opportunity to do that. Thank you.
We have a comment from the Mayor Protem.
Thank you for your input, Jerry. You know, it's real easy to go out and spend other people's money. And I appreciate the board, and I appreciate you looking at this objectively. Yes, we can, that's just like I was telling the city manager, we can open the library. We don't necessarily have to spend the money. That's sort of a task. So thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Hi, Grand Chris Cookneal. Did we have to close the library down to begin with? We had $15 million in unrestricted funds in our rainy day fund. It was raining. Did we, if it's just 43,000 and we're sitting on 15 million unrestricted, without touching anything else, we could have done that. You know, we browned out fire stations. We put Prescott in danger. Did we need to do that? We had 15 million in reserve funds for rainy day fund. Did we have to do that? Or is this a scary way to pass 443? You know, we keep talking, now we passed 443. I heard the city manager say it stabilized the general fund. But 100% of those proceeds are going to be used to pay down the unfunded liability. Where are you going to get money to stabilize the general fund if 100% of these monies are going to pay down the unfunded liability? And I agree with you, Jim, on this. I think some promises were made out there, and I think we need to, we need to keep that, pay it down. Another thing that we need to get on, and I don't know if anybody's done this, I talked with our state representatives, and they say they have not heard anything from this council except for Mayor Oberg since the election on how to get the state to help solve the further unfunded liability. The hole is still in the bottom of the bucket, and we're already starting to spend money. We had two good months, two good sales months, and all of a sudden, we can start hiring people again? We've got to be very careful with this money and moving forward. And you guys, I wish we'd get with the state and keep working to fix this, and whoever takes your chair, Mayor, I hope they pick up where you left off. So thank you, thank you for those efforts, and I think we, I think we had the money. We didn't have to, we didn't have to brown out. We didn't have to close the library. We had unrestricted funds waiting to be used on a rainy day, and it was raining. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor, council, Bill Arnold, Presidia Prescott, president of the Friends of the Public Library. As a friend, we went out and supported 443. And I read in one of the papers today, well, it must be self-interest. Of course, it's self-interest. We care about the community. So I have a new button for you. Support 43000. Restore the library on Sunday. Couple of other things you should know. If you haven't read the data, we have seven full-time equivalents of volunteers who work for your library. That's $160,000. We also have $85,000 coming in from the Friends to support programs. We will continue to do that. So I encourage you to vote yes on this. Take the money that's left over, send it to the state if you want to. But that 43,000 represents .0005 of what we owe on the PR pension fund. Not very much, but it can go a long way for the 500 to 700 people who use the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Ralph Hess from Prescott. I can tell from the comments made by council, you're already going to approve this thing. So what I, you have enough votes to do so. I agree with what Councilwoman Wilcox had mentioned about looking at the library as a need. Barry Barb had indicated that, I guess, more than 6,000 people had sent in postcards indicating that the citizens of Prescott view this as a need. So if you're going to start assessing priorities for the city of Prescott, I urge you to consider the voice of the citizens who are clearly indicating that this Prescott, that this library is a need. And when, when you're looking at this in the future, I urge you to consider that.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a couple more comments.
Barbara Jacobson, Prescott, Mayor. Mayor Protem, I'm a little confused about who your constituents are. To me, they're the citizens of Prescott. And as was just said, this is a need for the citizens of Prescott. So that's everyone. There weren't just a certain group of people that I imagine you promised. It's, you're an employee of the citizens of Prescott. Secondly, winter is coming, and as has been mentioned, we do have a lot of people who don't have a warm roof. I know it's not a homeless shelter, but this does provide a place where they can be and they can look for jobs. If you walk in there any Sunday when it reopens and you see nobody sitting there reading a book and nobody on a computer, then I would say, "Gosh, maybe you could close the library," but I can guarantee you, you will see people there. Additionally, when I do my budget, and I got this general amount, which is my general fund, and I don't need to take a chunk of it to pay PSPRS because that was what was being talked about, that some of the general fund might have to go. And with 443, we don't have to take a chunk. This was a no-brainer to me, when I, the way I do my math, and I'm not very good at it. But if I don't have to take a general chunk, a chunk to send to PSPRS, I have it to live. And how happy am I? And I think we need to be happy that we don't have to take that chunk because we have promised PSPRS can go there, and we can use that chunk for our quality of life. Thanks.
Okay, we'll take one more comment. Apparently not. Everybody's satisfied, okay. Looking forward to that $50,000 recoup at the end of the year, maybe some of that support the PSPRS. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve costs associated with restoring library Sunday hours.
Second. Can I have a motion, second vote, please?
Passes 7-0.
Item B.
Approval of amendment to the master plan for Granite Dell's Estates, revised preliminary plat of Granite Dell's Estates Phase II, and the second amendment to the agreement for potable water.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to modify a master plan for the Granite Dell's Estates subdivision. The original master plan created an opportunity for 1,308 lots. The master plan sets out the layout of the property and designates what lots do, what lot sizes and what lot types are in place. There's been a request to modify that to allow for some changes. So one of those changes occurred a couple of years ago to allow for an area with, that was originally proposed for commercial and industrial uses, to be a relatively small lot subdivision, fairly high density, relatively small lots compared to the rest of Prescott. It has been very successful as far as development goes. The developers of the overall Granite Dell's Estates have asked to modify, again, this original master plan, which had a lot of larger lots in this area and some commercial uses along here, to something that more approximates what's been very successful so far in the other area. And that's demonstrated by this. I apologize, it's a little hard to read. It's washed out a bit. So these lots that are proposed as part of this modification are in fact very similar to the very successful portion that was underway now. They're following success with success by asking to do a similar type of development. To do that, the master plan would need to be amended to allow this to be the new master plan, replacing the original. And a revision of the preliminary plat would need to occur, and this is a zoomed-out version of that, just showing a lot arrangement very much in line with the master plan lot layout that I just showed you on the color rendering. It adds additional lots above and beyond what the original master plan allowed for. It adds 91 additional lots overall to the subdivision. So from the original 1,308 lots that were proposed, it brings it to 1,399 lots overall. The type of lots is not a particular issue because we've already got an example of it and how well it's working. It does, however, also affect the water allocations for that. And we do have representative here from Water Resources, Craig McConnell, to talk to you about that aspect of it. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about the master plan change or the subdivision plat modification once Mr. McConnell is finished. Thank you.
Councilman Blair.
Okay, well, I guess we'll do it first. This is pretty common practice, George, from my standpoint, being on Planning and Zoning Commission, and the number of times that Prescott Lakes Master Plan was changed, I think it was a total of seven. And that's all based upon, based upon market and what's going on in today's world. You know, one time, we envisioned a hotel conference center on the top of the hill, and we ended up with Astoria. So I appreciate the fact that we're not building product that's not needed in the city of Prescott, number one. Number two, knowing that that development, and correct me if I'm wrong, did they not have to put in their own infrastructure, roads, water and sewer at that development?
Yes, sir. All of that's new infrastructure.
Okay. And the lines that were provided by the city for that infrastructure were to settle a lawsuit many years ago with Center Point East and West. Is that correct?
To some degree, yes. The road alignments were a result of that.
But the water and sewer were part of crossing the creek bed as part of a lawsuit with Center Point East and West. So there's a lot of reasons why infrastructures get put in place, and I just want to make that clear, that it's not always the city's footing the bill for development. Sometimes it's on the heels of a lawsuit.
Thank you. I think at the outset, it would probably be useful, when we're talking about water, to repeat that in this particular case, and this should be evident from the agenda of materials, that this is alternative water. This is not groundwater. So that's a major point to begin with because that distinction is important. The two sources that the city of Prescott has presently of alternative water online are recharged and recovered surface water from the lakes and treated effluent from the wastewater treatment plant. And so when the public sees articles about this, reviews materials and so forth, sometimes that very important distinction is overlooked. So this is not going to result in additional net pumping of groundwater. This is surface water and treated effluent, subject, since this is a major, major project over 250 acres, subject to Proposition 400, which provides that following wastewater generation, that wastewater will be treated in our wastewater treatment plant at the airport and then permanently recharged to safe yield. So first point, this is not groundwater. It's a renewable resource. It's alternative water. More specifically, with respect to this project, the water, the alternative water for this project, Grantell's Estates, was capped at 248.5 acre-feet by a 2013 Water Service Agreement Amendment. This quantity is considerably, and was knowingly considerably less than the quantity, total quantity of water required for build-out of this 1,100-acre project. And so what that did was it created an incentive. In 2013, the city's position was, "Show us progress, we can talk about water." And I think that from the agenda materials, and certainly anyone who has been out there recently, understands that significant progress has been made. So this is effectively a catch-up of the land use. The land use, and of course, on the agenda today is only, I think, what, 90 lots or something like that? That's the net out of 1,399. The land use change today is a very minor portion of that's 90, but it's a catch-up of water with land use, given that significant progress has been made. Last year, in 2016, the property owner sent a letter, August 16th, 2016, and requested that this imbalance of lots versus water availability be looked at. The Water Issues Committee had that on their agenda twice, and then in December, you may recall, that at a study session, that particular subject was brought to the council. The owner appeared and gave his remarks and so forth, and our understanding from the council discussion was, "Go back and see, community development and water resources, go back and see if we can work this thing out." There has been one very important change since December of 2016, which affects not only this particular request, this particular development, but all new development in the city of Prescott. And that relates to the revision in unit allocations of alternative water, not groundwater, alternative water to residential development, specifically single-family and multifamily housing types. And so by Amendment 1 to the 2017 water policy, which was adopted by council resolution on May 9th, those unit allocations were revised. And that had a significant effect on closing that difference between the amount of water which was available and the amount of water required for build-out of this development. That lowered the total required for build-out for 1,399 lots from 458.75 to 292 acre-feet. So that is 44.08 acre-feet above the current cap of 248.5. So that's a fairly significant reduction. And again, those unit allocations apply to all development, new development within the city. So since that quantity of water, or that gap or difference between the 248.5, if, you know, it's that 44.08, that net increase is substantially less in the event that the council is amenable to providing the water for build-out and effectively resolving this, watering this particular development, and then going on to other things in the water world, there would be no need to either wait until 2019 to allocate the requested water or allocate it incrementally as requested by the owner's letter of 2016. So when he wrote that letter in 2016, it was basically a different situation. He had proposed drawing, making up that gap in 50 acre-foot increments beginning in 2019. The second amendment to the Water Service Agreement on the agenda today, which is Attachment 5 in your packet, provides for a total allocation of 292.58 acre-feet of alternative water, which is that increase of 44.08. It's our recommendation that the increase be obtained by a corresponding reduction in the reservation for vacant residentially-zoned tracts. And you recall, we've had considerable discussion about that reservation in the past years. The balance of that reservation on January 1st of 2017 was 381.3 acre-feet. So the recommendation is to reduce that 381.3, or what it is now, which is probably slightly lower than that, but not much lower, and, you know, reduce that, you know, get that 44.08 from the 381.3. And as you recall, that 381.3 is already in the process of being reduced in 50 acre-foot blocks per year, and it will be sunsetted. So the effect of this particular recommendation would be to have this sunset a little bit earlier. On the other hand, this is alternative water. Alternative water is the source of water for the city's development. We have water policy for allocation of that renewable resource. We have a general plan which guides growth, and that is the recommendation before you today. As George pointed out, it's relatively minor in the land use side. It's relatively... It's relatively, in my opinion, relatively minor on the water side now, according to the new unit allocations. So we're suggesting that the council take action on this, effectively resolve it and move on.
Councilman Wilcox.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for George. As of today, how many lots have been, have completed buildings on them?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Because the word "substantial" is used, and I don't know what that means.
There's substantial progress underway. A lot of houses are under construction. I don't have a count for how many are completed.
So we really don't know if the conditions of preliminary plat approval have been met, but in your opinion, they have. But we don't have any numbers, no factual basis there.
Mr. Pan is here. He may be able to answer the question.
Someday, I'd like a developer to advocate for his own development instead of having staff advocate for the development.
Would you like Nick from the House?
Yes.
But he's here.
Good afternoon. Mike Fan, 132 North Montezuma Now.
There you go.
The lots, we developed between Phase 1A and Phase 1D, and all of Phase 1A was originally industrial development, prior to the city changing the ASAP, the Airport-Specific-Area Plan. So when they changed that ASAP, that opened that up for residential development. We thought that was a much better use, much more demand for use, frankly, not only for the development, but also for the uses of the trail, get that industrial development away from the trail. Of the 220 lots in Phase 1A and 1D, I believe all but 17 are sold. Of the 203 lots, take that with a little bit grain of the salt, because I don't know if that's an exact number, but very close to it. Of the 203 lots, I'm going to say 75% are already under construction or completed homes with people living there. I don't know how many people are living there right now. It's significant. I'm going to guess that 60 or 70 homes now occupied and 150 under construction in one way or another.
Okay.
Okay.
That answers my question.
Okay, thank you.
I continue with my comments. If the lot sizes are decreased, in my opinion, the amount of open space should be increased. The density is increasing, which is fine. We have 91 more lots being requested and 44 acre-feet more water being requested to be allocated. But there's no commensurate increase in open space. And also, when I look at this compared to the general plan, I think the proposal is a gross deviation from the general plan. General plan encourages mixed-use zoning, such as vertically mixed with commercial on the first floor, residential, so forth, a little bit like what we're seeing in the Deepwell Ranch proposal, maybe not on that scale, but that idea. This is a good example of urban sprawl. We're wasting a lot of land and resources to build and maintain infrastructure. With respect to water, I don't believe we need to take more water allocations away from undeveloped, residentially-zoned tracts of land within the city of Prescott, the core of the city. We're taking away their ability to develop on an infill basis, which is something that our general plan encourages. It does not encourage urban sprawl. It encourages infill development. So if we allocate 44 more acre-feet of water now, whoever comes along next week, who wants to develop a, or subdivide a tract closer into the city, they may not be able to get the water. With respect to workforce housing, I question whether a nurse at YRMC or a teacher employed in our public school system could really afford a $300,000 house. What's the mortgage these days on a $300,000 house? I'm estimating it's going to be over $2,000 a month, maybe up to $2,400 a month with taxes and insurance. I can't even afford that. And I get a good pension from the state. To call it workforce housing, just to me, is a sham. And also, reducing the commercial area, again, is contrary to our general plan concept and also costs the taxpayers more when we take it from industrial, commercial to residential. Because we know, and we can read in the general plan, that the cost of servicing residential development is higher than it is for commercial, especially when commercial is generating jobs and it's retail and it's generating sales tax. So I can't support this proposed amendment, which increases the number of lots. I have no problem with the density, but it's just not a good, it doesn't compute for me. It's not a good benefit for the taxpayer. What do the taxpayers get out of this? That's the question I have to ask. That's the bottom line. I think they're getting a bigger tax bill out of it.
Councilwoman Chiskin.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Gene, when you said urban sprawl, I've always thought of urban sprawl as spreading out further than your boundaries initially. I don't see any spread out further. I see density, but there's already sprawl. I mean, if you want to call that sprawl, it's already there.
Yes, it is.
And so, you know, it's not an issue of, you know, are we going to take up more land and could we use it for open space or something else? It's already being taken up, and it's being utilized to its fullest extent according to the market. And as far as commercial is concerned, I have to say that the people who work in a commercial area, let's say, would have been a commercial area, don't have to live in Prescott. They don't have to shop in Prescott. They don't have to eat in Prescott. They could live in Prescott Valley and do that there, or they could live in Chino Valley and do that there. I think that this overall, for the economic health of Prescott, we need a good mix of commercial and residential, but for the overall health of Prescott, I think that this is probably going to be better. So that's my comment.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Yes, I would agree with Steve as far as the, I certainly, I've been out there. It certainly doesn't appear to, what I think of as urban sprawl, I think here we have the market that's working, and I think because we got our water allocation where it's more real, that this is something that, you know, I'll certainly support because I think it's, I think it's within what we can do, and I believe it is the market at work. And we don't want to be building things people don't want.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Blair.
You know, I'll just say from my standpoint, you know, I've been doing what I do for 38 years, and I will tell you, it doesn't matter whether it's this development or another new development. Those people that are coming in here are spending money with me. I'm paying 2% city sales tax back, and it's a big chunk. And that's just only one small part of what new residents purchase, let alone ongoing purchases at Costco stores and everything else. So are they bringing some to the table? Sure. Ongoing general fund money, and that's something to look at.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Anything from the public? Go ahead.
Mayor, oh, sorry. Do you want to go first?
I just, I sat there and I thought it would be a disservice not to address your concern regarding commercial development out there. Backing away from Granite Dells Estates and looking at the region, AED, actually, prior to AED, Cabin came to the city of Prescott and had several hundred acres zoned to the north of my project, and almost all of that is commercial. So we initially developed, platted, zoned, and developed the northwest corner of the Granite Dells Estates project in accordance with what was required under the ASAP, even though the industrial land near the airport, a lot of that sits vacant. There just isn't the demand for that. Moving forward with commercial development, as AED develops around the Granite Dells Parkway interchange, I believe my ability to market commercial land off of the highway when they have highway frontage is going to be very limited. So I could build it, but I don't think they will come. So the residential is what the market is driving right now, especially at this location. I do think you're going to see significant commercial development on 89A, significant retail sales going on there, but as you get away from the highway, the traffic's just not there to support it, Gene. The other thing, keep in mind, most of the water we're talking about was already contemplated initially in the first annexation and development agreement in 2008, and then again in 2013. Most of that water was just held back by this council saying, Mike, we like what you're doing. We're going to approve your master plan. Show us you're here for real, and then we'll follow up with the water. So that's really why we're here today. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Let me see if there's any more. Any other questions, comments from the council, or from the public, I mean? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve MP 17-002, the amended master plan for Granite Dells Estate.
Second.
Got a motion, second vote, please.
Pass the six, oh.
Mayor.
Mayor. Pro Tim. Tim, have you voted?
Pass the 6-1.
Mayor, I move to approve PP 17-001, the revised preliminary plat for Granite Dells Estate, Phase 2.
Second.
Motion, second vote, please.
Pass the 6-1.
Mayor, I move to approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement of Potable Water, number WSA 070928, City Contract Number 2008-165A2.
Second.
A motion, second vote, please.
Pass the 6-1.
Item C.
Approval of City Contract with Alpine Software for Fire Records Management Software.
Mayor and council, before you today, have an agreement with Alpine Software for Fire Records Management. In a nutshell, Fire Records Management, or any records management, is the who, what, when, where, and why of public safety software. Calls come into the dispatch center, assets are deployed, people are helped. Your records management system is kind of the report of what happened when those people got there. What did they find? What did they do? And of course, that drives data reports, trending, that sort of thing. We are implementing Tri-Tech right now for public safety, as you're aware. The Tri-Tech Fire Records Management System actually ends up being quite a bit more expensive to the tune of approximately two times more expensive than the Alpine Software. So before you today, I'm here on behalf of Prescott Fire Department, Groom Creek Fire District, to join with Central Yavapai to use the same Fire Records Management Software within this area. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Chief Light is here. I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
So is this software that's utilized in vehicles or in the office?
It's going to be, it's going to be all of the above. It's going to be in vehicle. It's going to be mobile. And it's also going to be used by people within the dispatch center, the fire departments, the fire districts, cross-district, so all of the above, basically.
So it'll interface with the PRCC?
Yes. That was one of the requirements, to pick anything not Tri-Tech. And one of the benefits of Tri-Tech is it integrates with a lot of other software without giving up everything that you would want to do with it in the process.
Because I know a couple of years ago, I was out the fire department talking to them about software, and they said they needed this because, you know, they needed to have notepads, whatever you want to call them, laptops in the vehicle so that they could, you know, state exactly what happened on an incident. And I know sometime later, when we were trying to get backup information on an incident, didn't seem to exist. So I hope this will actually solve that problem so we can go back and get the record history on what happened in a particular incident, whether it was, you know, a drug overdose or it was something else.
Yeah. One of the current, major, major, major limitations of our current software, which we're in the process of replacing, is data goes in, but data doesn't come out. Or it doesn't come out very easily, or what does come out is really hard to use. The software, Tri-Tech, Alpine, designed ground up to be a lot of data-driven elements. So you can figure out not only just the real raw basics, who, what, when, where, why, but you can actually get some data analysis out of it and figure out, you know, these trends are happening, what are we going to do about it from a policy direction on the public safety side of the world. So it kind of is two things. The IT part has capabilities, but really allows your fire people and police in the Tri-Tech world to see the entire world of what their business is and make some really smart decisions about what is or isn't going on, which right now is very, very difficult.
Will this also support those doing fire inspections of commercial establishments?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments with the council?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Nate, do you have any idea when the fire inspections on commercial properties that are open to the public here in the city are going to be completed?
There's two parts to that.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, could you restate your question again, please?
I asked Nate if he had any idea of when the fire inspections on commercial property open to the public were going to be completed.
I don't know if Nate has that information. Currently, they're, they're ongoing. Whether we get to an end point, I don't think that will ever occur. There's ongoing inspections taking place virtually every day as administered through building safety and that particular role on the commercial inspections.
Okay. I think it's important for folks to understand that on a regular basis, on a daily basis, it could be subject to a fire inspection, period, as long as we have the inspectors.
Most certainly.
Okay? It's a public health and safety issue. So, you know, we've been wanting to try and get this accomplished for a long time.
Yeah, this is irrespective of that. The inspections have been ongoing. We've been able to manage through our current records management system to provide degree of documentation. This will allow us to extrapolate relevant data points in order to further drive our preventative needs within this community.
Yeah, so you have an archive of what's taking place and what needs to take place.
A much more robust archive, that's correct, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments with the council?
I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I could ask it. It says here that Prescott or Groom Creek Fire may not opt for all of the modules that CAFMA would like to implement. Is that something that would be normal, typical?
Yeah, there's certain ones that we may toggle on versus what they toggle on. For example, we may already have existing practices and procedures for trending where placement of certain equipment is and inventory and those kind of things, which they don't have. Being a fire district, they are all encompassing vehicle fleet maintenance and those kind of things, whereas a lot of ours is offshore to another operating department. So there's some features that we would not need, whereas they would need, and you're able to toggle those on or off for the different jurisdictions. The other advantage of going with this and going, much like we did with self-contained breathing apparatus, as of late, we've done with apparatuses, it allows for better interoperability between all the organizations and our ability to share that data. Our response model has automatic aid, which means closest available unit, but right now we have proprietary needs within the city of Prescott, and sharing of certain information's very difficult. It's still using, I hate to say fax machine, it is old, but sharing faxes of information back and forth versus using data to bridge that stream.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilman Ohr.
Yes, I don't remember reading, Nate, is this an annual, an annual charge we'll have, or is it a one-time, we're just buying the software as your license that we will?
There is. There is a annual support cost. I can get that for you. It is nowhere near the amount being asked today. So the first year is the most, subsequent years would be somewhere, I would say, no more than 20% of that total, so $18,000 or so, if my math is correct.
Okay. So there will be an annual that'll be coming out of general?
Yes, ma'am, but not to this magnitude, though.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do they have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2018-060 with Alpine Software, and the amount not to exceed $98,505.
Second. Have a motion, second vote, please.
Pass the 7-0.
Adam D.
Approval of City Contract with Lucidity Incorporated for Maintenance Management Software Support, Enterprise Licensing, and Solid Waste Implementation.
Mayor and council, what you have in front of you is actually a three-in-one type thing. The risk of doing that is confusing what you're being asked to look at or not, but I prefer that almost to, "You see me, you see me again in a month, you see me again in a month." Not that I don't like, all of you enjoy being here, it's just, it's one of those things. Lucidity is kind of an odd thing to explain, if only because, if you say, "What is Lucidity?" Well, it's software. It's used by Public Works Airport, the Parks Department facilities. It could be used by the Fleet Maintenance Division. What it really is, is an asset management system. So an asset in this case could be a stretch of road, it could be a garbage truck, it could be a container for garbage, it could be any number of things. And the idea is, I want to know, the organization wants to know, what does it cost for us to procure that item, to maintain that item? And that's everything from parts to labor. In the case of streets, there's a way with the software to tell you to grade your roads so it can predict, hey, in seven years, you're going to need to repave this stretch of road. If you don't do it, then the quality of that road's going to degrade, et cetera and so forth. So what you're looking at today is not just a one, or I should say a one, annual yearly support for Lucidity. That's something we do every year. It's also the implementation of the solid waste module for Lucidity. And what makes Lucidity interesting is that it's like a black hole for data. All the data that comes into it from all these different places can be shared across all the different parts of Lucidity. That's pretty nifty if you like data, and it also ties to our GIS system. So the net result is it becomes very much more, not just simple, but across a large number of bodies in the organization, you get some idea for cost, cost projection, operational detail. We have people out in the field, where do they go? What does it cost the Parks Department to maintain the bathrooms at Kenley Field, for example? That's something Lucidity can help you figure out if you want to do that. The third part today I brought to you is that we're kind of in-between worlds in Lucidity where we can go to enterprise licensing, which really means if you want to deploy mobile Lucidity units, if you want to use other Lucidity modules like capital improvement project software, fleet maintenance, it behooves us financially to go to enterprise licensing because it becomes less expensive versus forking out anywhere between $1,000 to $2,000 per seat, per module, every year for the rest of our natural lives. So financially, as Lucidity continues to expand and use within the city, it's a better bang for your buck to go to enterprise licensing model, especially if you could have or foresee garbage, solid waste vehicles with laptops in them, tablets in them, parks across the board. You could have people mobilely using Lucidity to get work orders, do things more efficiently, yada, yada, yada. I'm not going to waste your time with that kind of thing. But in a nutshell, that's kind of what you're looking at today. So I'd be more than happy to answer additional questions, clarify, et cetera.
Questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? So we're going to move into the 21st century, is what you're telling me?
Yes, sir. We're already there, but we're going to move a little further.
All right, great. Thanks. Do they have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2018-061 with Lucidity Incorporated, and an amount not to exceed $92,874.33.
Second. Have a motion, second vote, please.
Pass the 7-0.
Adam E.
Approval of City Contract with Karasoft for Essella Civic Platform Maintenance and Software Licenses.
Mayor and council, this item is a FY18 budgeted renewal of our software licensing with Essella. Essella's agent for that is Karasoft. It's a little bit confusing, but that's who they are. What Essella is, is a number of things. It is business licensing, it is building permitting, it is building inspection, fire inspection, public works inspection. We are nearly done with our implementation of Essella. That'll be live by the end of, say, November at the latest. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions, clarify, explain better what this is.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the voice going to change when I call in for a permit?
It may, yes.
I hope so.
If it's a good thing, then yeah, it's more than likely going to change.
Any other comments from the council?
I'm just curious what he talks about when he goes home at night.
Are you talking about myself, Councilman Blair? Yeah, I mean, nothing to do with IT.
Oh, good. Good for you.
Yeah, that is good. Any other comments, questions? Any from the public? Do they have a motion?
I move approval of City Contract Number 2018-062 with Karasoft for Essella Civic Platform Maintenance and Software Licenses.
Second.
Have a motion, second vote, please.
Pass the 7-0.
Thank you.
Adam F.
Award City Contract with Kellywise Engineering for Engineering Design and Post-Design Construction Services for the Zone 56/76 Pump Station Upgrade Project.
Thank you. Steve Oroz, Public Works. This item before you today is for a design contract with Kellywise Engineering to do the, to finish the plans that were started a number of years ago. The project got delayed because of a need for easements with the tribe. That has been resolved, and we're working through that. And we just need to finish the plans up, bring them up to current standards, and move forward with the construction of the project. This project's located at the intersection of Highway 69 in Heather Heights. There's an existing pump station there now that's, needs to be updated and improved to provide a water service, not only to the resort, but up and down the Highway 69 corridor. We chose Kellywise to finish the project since they had invested the time and knowledge into the original design, and we're looking to finish the design in the next couple of months and get it out to construction around the first of the year. So if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do they have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2018-057 with Kellywise Engineering, in the amount of $288,647.
Second.
Have a motion, a second vote, please.
Pass the 7-0.
Thank you. Adam G.
Approval of City Contract with PCS Mobile, to replace mobile data computers.
Mayor, council, back like a bad penny here. I actually brought some props that I thought would be useful to explain kind of what this is about. What you see right here is effectively what police and fire are using right now. It's a Panasonic laptop. I'm not a 98-pound weakling, but it is not the lightest laptop in the world. It's fairly hefty, it's designed to be dropped, frozen, high heat. We've had these been run over by vehicles before. They're kind of the industry standard for what is robust. And the point of these is they cost roughly three times what a regular laptop's going to cost you. But this particular unit is eight years old right now. So if you were to buy a regular laptop, like the one that Mr. Woodfill's using over here on the chair, it's not going to last more than six to eight months because he's got a 24/7 type of use cycle. It's pretty straightforward. Mr. Paladini liked me to drop it to prove it's tough, but I'd rather, I believe it is, I've seen him drop, but I'd rather not be proven wrong, so. The replacement unit is not exactly this unit, but it's very similar. So essentially, you're looking at something about this size, equally as durable, equally as tough. The difference here is that while I could take this side of my vehicle, police and fire, it's not the most wieldy thing to be running around and using mobile. It's just not, not what it was designed for. This type of device is something, if it's a little bound in a police car, I could take the screen off of it, take it outside, walk around, take pictures of what's going on as part of my job, upload those pictures in our Tri-Tech software and attach those right there to what is going on public safety-wise. What you have before you is effectively replacing the fleet of these with something very much like this. You could make an argument, if I were in your chair, the argument, B, A, this is not inexpensive, and that's true. B, why not just use what we have, or why didn't we do this sooner? And the answer really is the software we're currently using can't take advantage of anything that this does. It just can't. So while you could spend money on this, with the current software, you'd be wasting our money, or we'd be wasting our money, really, when you get down to it. Having said that, Chief Black is here, Deputy Chief Bonney is here. If you have any questions, comments, more than glad to answer them.
Councilman Blair.
Two questions. Quantity that you're going to purchase, and how many years do you assume that they will last?
Quantity is going to be 33, which matches the number of police department vehicles currently with units similar. Based on what we've seen of the current units, I would expect to be pushing eight to 10 years' life realistically out of those. The first five are warranty on Panasonic. After that, I have no reason to believe you wouldn't see a good eight to 10 years out of those units.
Thank you.
Councilman Lazzell.
So with that particular unit, if they're investigating a scene, they can just take that out and attach any picture they have to the report that they're typing on that unit, much like you would do.
Absolutely.
With a tablet.
Yes.
It's almost like a hybrid. Okay? I like it. Oh, and also, I've used an eight-year-old computer and, you know, we all know how technology is, so I think it's high time.
Understood.
Councilwoman Monora.
So Nate, I'm making the assumption that the police had a lot of input on what to choose on this.
This was absolutely 100% a collaborative police and IT project. IT does not want to wrongly pick a tool, and these are really fancy tools, but tools. And by the same token, we felt it's important the police department needs to have direct and very strong input on what do they need, what do they want, what works, what doesn't work. It's hard to unbuy something once you have a pallet of them sitting around.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do they have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2018-064 with PCS Mobile, and an amount not to exceed $185,493.50.
Second. Have a motion, a second vote, please.
Pass the 7-0.
Thank you. My final founding fathers comment today is from Abraham Lincoln, "To send by silence when they should protest makes cowards a man." Thank you for coming. This meeting is adjourned.
Amen.